Okay. Is everybody ready? Great. We'll now call to order the June 2 Reno City Planning Commission meeting. We have the Pledge of Allegiance from Commissioner Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we get a roll call, please?
Taylor is absent at this time. Dracula.
Here.
Gower.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
You knows is absent. Veltto.
Here.
Villanueva.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We'll now move on to public comments. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Do we have any requests to speak for? Forms?
It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior. You will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. With that being said, we did receive correspondence that was distributed to the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. We do not have any requests to speak forms and we do not have any voicemails.
Thank you. I can't really see in the room right now, but is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none and hearing none, we'll close public comment. Move on to approval of the minutes. Item 4.1, approval of Reno Planning Commission regular May 4, 2022 meeting.
Commissioner Villanueva, for the record, I was absent for the May 4 meeting, so I will abstain.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I will move to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Dracula, just a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Now, we're going to move a little bit out of order to help out the folks that are here on agenda item 6.1. The agenda says that we can move, take items on the agenda out of order. As such, we're going to exercise that ability and move to item 6, which is public hearings. And we'll take item number 6.1, which is case number LDC 22-00067. Do we have a presentation from the applicant? Yes, from the applicant.
My name is Mark Dennison. I'm the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints facility manager for about 45 properties across-
Mark, I'm so sorry. Can you please tilt the microphone up to you a little bit more?
Is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
We have 45 properties across northern Nevada and eastern California. And one of those properties is our property, a church building on Neal Road where we're having some significant issues with vandalism and misuse on the building. And that is why we're here tonight. With me tonight is Bishop Dennis Ford, who is the bishop of one of the congregations that meets in this building. And he will go first and then I will proceed after him. And then we will close tonight with remarks from our local stake president, who is I'm sorry, President Farr, who serves as the stake president for the Reno Mount Rose Stake.
My name is Dennis Ford. I'm the bishop for the Mount Rose Ward, one of the congregations that meets in the Neal Road building. And I've been in this position for about six years. And prior to that, for about five years, I served as a physical facilities representative for this specific building and many others. And over the years, I've witnessed a lot of vandalism and stuff taking place at this building. I thought I'd take a minute and share with you some of the things that I've seen and you'll see some of the pictures that we have to offer. A lot of things take place in this building. Things that just come to mind right away are graffiti. A lot of graffiti left the church yesterday, graffiti on the building again. Probably on a weekly or biweekly basis, we're removing graffiti. A lot of the youth in the back of the church, once you see the video, there's a little hidden alcove. A lot of younger kids congregate there. They get up on the roof, they break pipes off the roof, they skateboard on the roof, they try to light the eaves on fire. They leave trash behind, alcohol, drug deals taking place. We even had some sexual activity taking place back there that had to stop with these youth. We've had actually a gang shooting in the parking lot. We had some ladies in a meeting behind the building there, right out that window, and there was a gang shooting. Every Saturday, our members clean the church. They come in volunteer to clean the church. And we spend probably a minimum of an hour every Saturday just cleaning trash that's been left behind. People come in with their cars and spin donuts in our parking lot. Had a lady the other day, I caught her, she was taking rocks out of our flower bed to take them home. She was an older lady. So we've just felt that it's an important thing that we try to secure our property a little bit more so that we can, I mean, and it's been very costly and I think he can share with you some of the expenses. We had a break-in, had a couple of break-ins. We have a number of broken windows throughout the years. Just getting very expensive and we feel putting a fence around one that is adequate, that would be a height that would kind of deter people from coming in would be better. So I thank you for your time and hope you consider this for us. Thank you.
Our hope as we present tonight is that you will not think we're just trying to create a gated community, but rather an opportunity for us to protect what we have, but still make it open and available for those in the neighborhood and any who would like to come. Our church is one that has on each of our signs, "Visitors, welcome," and that's not just a slogan. We really do mean it. And we have a cross-culture of many different types of individuals. The demographics are all over the board. And we stand ready to assist people as they come to worship and come to find grace in the Lord's presence. We have congregations, three congregations that meet at that building. And not just for church services, but we do have an aggressive sports opportunity with a basketball court, pickleball court, and designs for all kinds of activities in multi-language. About a year ago, after the break-in that did a lot of damage in June of 2021, we had the church security do a study and pulled this data down from data that's reported by federal and local law enforcement, which shows that a safe community is at an average of about 100. And in the rating in this particular location, we came in at 409, which is four times what it would be to be in a safe location. We don't want to move. We'd like to stay there. We're serving people in that area. But we do need to find a way to secure our place a little more. As Bishop Ford mentioned, we were tagged again last night and we are constantly going through a graffiti cleanup, even when it comes on the brick of the building that's very hard to get off. We're always finding trash. And as he mentioned, the local members will spend nearly an hour each week picking up the trash around the building. This is pictures of the break-in from last year where actually a man had to be arrested who wouldn't leave the building there. We've also had the problem with youth getting on the roof, damaging the shingles, lighting fire to the fascia and soffit there, and also tearing down the gutters and downspouts. This building was built in 1975 and serves a good portion of South Reno. And we do have a building that is just south of us, in the area of the Edmonton area, down in that area. But most of the people who live in that area attend that building and the people who live up in this area, Mount Rose and Lakeside Ward, attend that area. What's not shown there is a Spanish branch that reaches all over South Reno in that area. We are requesting a six-foot privacy fence that will not just be for security, but will also add kind of a look to the area and provide a good-looking opportunity for us to protect what we do hold dear. The apartment complex to the rear of our property already has that fence up. We are looking to install the fence with driveway gates and pedestrian gates so that we can have access. As was directed by the staff, we have relocated the design to have those gates at least 20 feet off the rear of the sidewalks. Also, we've moved the fence about 18 inches off the back of the sidewalk so we don't encroach on the right-of-way. And we've agreed to have the gates open specific times of Sunday, 6:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday nights from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. and other times as needed. If there's a dinner or an activity, we'll make sure that they are opened up. But our issue is that while we're not there, there are those who come to do harm on the building. And we'd just like to be able to secure it so that when we're not there, it is protected. I think that's all I've got. President Farr.
Good evening. My name's Brent Farr. I'm the, what they call the stake president, which basically means I oversee the church and its members in South Reno. And I hold meetings in this building and I've had a lot of interesting experiences over the years in there. And this is as much about protecting property as well as the protection of the members that are there. We've had incidents. They showed one where a guy broke in. He was on meth. He came through the, one of the windows and, you know, there's blood all over the walls and he urinated on the floor and just crazy stuff that goes on in there. And so really just worried about protecting our members. Some people not really feeling safe being at the building anymore. And our ask is, I think, pretty simple. I mean, a lot of those surrounding gates are six feet, like we're right there by Pine Middle School where my kids went and then the little elementary school across the street, they all have six-foot fences. And that's what we're hoping to get, you know, just to help us a little bit with protection of the building and safety of our members. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And do we have a presentation from staff?
Yes, you do. Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Leah Brock, Assistant Planner with Development Services, City of Reno. This evening, I am following up on the presentation by the applicants. I just want to fill in a few of the blanks and provide you guys with some of the Reno Municipal Code analysis on this. The applicant has requested a major deviation to allow for a security fence exceeding four feet in height to be located in the required front yard area and within 20 feet of each side of a primary driveway. Reno Municipal Code only allows for a maximum four-foot height in the front yard setback and within 20 feet of a primary driveway. The reason for that is really just visibility. This project consists of approximately 700 linear feet of six-foot ornamental fencing, three rolling vehicular gates, and one pedestrian grate. The fence will border the two sides of the subject parcel on the northwest corner of the intersection at Neal Road and Filbert Road. The key issues that staff analyzed in this request were compatibility with surrounding development, and that was really looking at the height of fences in the area, and also parking access and circulation because the height of that fence is directly related to the line of sight regarding access and circulation. But I think it's worth pointing out here that the real key issue is health, welfare, and safety. These, even though I wasn't able to fully analyze that aspect within Reno Municipal Code, I do believe that the exhibits that were provided by the applicant show that there is a need for this fencing and that the real key issue here is the safety and health and welfare of these, of not only our applicants, but all of their people who visit this establishment. The subject 2.56 acre site is located in the multifamily residential 30 units per acre zoning district. Adjacent uses include a small private school to the northeast, an apartment complex to the west and northwest, and public schools, both an elementary school and a middle school to the south and southeast. The proposed deviation would allow for a 50% increase in the maximum height of the fence, which the applicant is allowed to ask for under a major deviation application. Again, the maximum height allowed is four feet and this would allow for a six-foot fence. The proposed fence will adjoin an existing fence at the southwest corner of the property, run along Filbert Road, and then around the corner and north, I'm sorry, around the corner, and then north up Neal Road, and it would connect with the existing fence that's on the northeast corner of the parcel outside of the front setback where that little private school is located. There will also be the three rolling gates, which you can see here in yellow, and the pedestrian gate where the sidewalk, where the existing sidewalk connects to the walkway on Filbert Road. You can see it in blue on the south side of the property there. In discussing the compatibility with the surrounding development, it was really just about whether or not there are six-foot fences or similar fences in the area. To the west of the property where the apartment complex is, you can see up here on the top-left corner, this photo shows that existing fence. This is very similar to what the applicant is proposing. The difference in that fence being allowed in the front setback and the applicant's fence not being allowed in the setback is that that fence swoops down to a four-foot height with six-foot posts, which is technically allowed. The applicant was given that option, I believe, before he applied, and it was determined that that wasn't going to be secure enough for their property. Down on the bottom right-hand side here, you can see the little private school. And just in the corner there, you can see that that six-foot chain link fence that they have. The applicant has proposed to wrap around that corner and connect to that existing fence. Here, this is across Filbert Road. This is the elementary school. The elementary school is in a different zoning district, so they are allowed to have this six-foot fence, and they do have that six-foot chain link fence all the way along that side of the road. In discussing the conditions that we have suggested, the rolling gates at each of the three driveways will need to be set back a minimum of 20 feet from the sidewalk. This will allow a vehicle to exit the roadway and safely stop while the gate is opening. The gates will need to remain open during business hours so it doesn't cause congestion on the roadway. That's condition five. The site plan submitted does not depict the actual location of the fencing. The fencing shown on the site plan could possibly be encroaching into the public right-of-way. And it appears that the fencing and vehicular gates may block access to existing parking spaces, including the ADA parking space that you can see right near the corner by that rolling gate right there. The applicant will be required to either obtain a survey to verify the location of the property lines and place the fence on those property lines, or they would need to obtain an encroachment permit from the Public Works Department to encroach into that right-of-way, which the Public Works Department does offer those encroachment permits for fencing. Also, the fencing in our gates will not block access to any existing parking spaces unless a striping plan is submitted and approved with a fence permit. And the reason for requiring that is not that there's not ample parking, it's just we want to make sure that we end up with the correct number of ADA spaces should that ADA space need to be moved or taken out. The project was reviewed by various city divisions and partner agencies. Courtesy notices and hearing notices were sent to the surrounding property and no comments were received. The project was reviewed and presented to the Ward III Neighborhood Advisory Board, but no comments were received from them either. With all the recommended conditions of approval, the proposed security fence not only appears to meet or exceed code standards, but it also addresses the applicable findings. Staff recommends approval subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. The recommended motion is on the screen and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll come back to the Commission for Disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I visited the site.
Commissioner Dracula, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Villanueva, I visited the site and drove around it.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Familiar with the site?
Thank you. Commissioner Veltto, I'm familiar with the site as well. Now, we'll open up public comments. Do we have any requests to speak forms?
We did not receive any requests to speak forms. We did not receive any voicemails or correspondence for this item.
Great. Would any public like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll now come back to the Commission for Questions.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I have a quick question for staff, just as a point of understanding. I, so, is it, for a standard fence permit, a survey is not required? Is that why it's been added as a condition here?
That is correct. A survey is not required for a fence permit. Anyone can come down and apply for a permit. Just requires a site plan showing where that fence is. The site plan that will be required is going to be required to be more detailed than what was provided with this application. It's just that there's been some back and forth on where that fence is actually going to be located in relation to not just the property line, but the sidewalk as well. So we just want to make sure that it gets placed in the right spot.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only question I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Villanueva, I just have comments, not questions. I just want to thank staff for recommending that the gate be pulled in so that the vehicle can fit in and get out of the roadway. And then also thank the applicant for the request for an ornamental fence and not just a chain link fence. I think it does fit in better with the area and the neighboring site, which has a similar fence.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Villanueva. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I'm going to make a quick discussion and then a motion if that's acceptable. I do think, I did want to follow up on Commissioner Villanueva's, I think, actually just driving down Neal Road, I think there's just a, this is probably one of the few sites that doesn't have a fence around it, which I think is probably what's contributing to some of the issues. So as far as all the compatibility, I think it's pretty easy to make that finding, both immediately adjacent to the site and in the neighborhood. So based on that and seeing no further discussion, in the case of LDC 22-00067, the LDS Church Security Fence, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the major deviation, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. And based on those conditions, I can make all the findings.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dracula, I second I can make all the findings.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much and good luck. Hopefully, this all stops happening at the church.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, since we went out of order, we'll go back to item number five, which is the Planning Commission Training Series, American Planning Association Video Presentation on Managing the Planning Commission. And Jason, I'll turn it over to you to get that started.
Thank you. Jason Garcia-Laboo, Planning Manager, for the record. We have another video presentation today. I think it's about 27 minutes or so. It's on managing the Planning Commission. This is the fourth video in the series. So enjoy and we'll be back afterwards.
Hello, I'm Michael Blue. I'm here with Stan Popovich from the Village of Downers Grove. And we're going to talk about how to run an effective commission meeting. So Stan, thank you for coming.
Thanks, Michael.
If we could get you to maybe tell us to kick off, why is it important to run a good meeting? Or maybe you've got an example of a meeting that maybe didn't run so well that could kind of help us understand that.
Well, I think we've all been in the meeting where we have a lot of public members come.
I'm not sure if chambers can hear me, but I'm not hearing anything on the Zoom side.
Of the public, speak about the same topic.
Yeah, I'm glad you said something.
And I think it's really important to have a-
Oh, okay. The video doesn't have sound in the beginning.
Okay.
Checks out.
Strong chairperson and council members or commission members that know how to run a meeting and move the meeting along and make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be heard while still getting through the meeting.
Absolutely. And just to be clear that we know what we're talking about, what's the difference between a public hearing and a-
the testimony that's provided, based on the standards that are provided by staff or the zoning ordinance or whatever ordinance is applicable at that point. And then they can also make in second motions.
So, we've only just started to dive into the runnings of a meeting, but it already sounds kind of complicated. And if I'm a resident sitting in the audience, I may not know what's going to go on. Is there value, or do you have an introduction or something that gets read at the beginning that says, here's what's going to happen?
Yes, I think that's very important to have that at the beginning of all the public hearings, because like you did mention, there's a lot of people that this might be their first time coming to a plan commission meeting, or zoning board of appeals meeting, and so it's very important that the chairperson lays out sort of the order that things go into so people understand that, and also to allow people and tell people when they have an opportunity to speak. So, there's generally a specific point in time where the public's afforded an opportunity to speak, and that's a great time for them to know that, okay, I'm going to be the third or fourth opportunity to speak here, and these other people are going to go before me.
So, is there a general order to a typical plan commission?
Yeah, there's a typical meeting order to it. We generally call to order the meeting, the chairperson will call to order the meeting, explain the rules and how the meeting's going to work, appoint, let people know where information is, can be found, whether it's on the side of the council chambers or the chambers, and if it's online, if they can find it where they can, so if they want to follow along with the meeting. Then they generally review minutes, and then they go into the agenda portion of the meeting where they will open a public hearing or a specific case that they're talking about in the evening, swear in the audience members. I like to have staff give a presentation to present the case there and to explain the standards that are required to be met. The applicant then typically presents, and at this point, the plan commission or whatever commission it is can ask the applicant questions. And then it's open to the public, where the public can ask questions or make comments about the petition and the application. At that point, the, after that's all done and the questions have been asked, the commission members will typically ask any questions back to the applicant themselves. So, if the public had questions, this is an opportunity to get those answers from the applicant, or if there's clarification that staff has to provide. Generally, the public hearing is then closed, so there's no more public comment at that point. And then the board deliberates, and they look at the standards and they discuss it throughout. Each member has an opportunity to speak at that point and discuss the meeting. The board typically will make a motion, and then the hearing will be closed, and then the, we always like to have the commission, the chairperson, tell the public what the next steps are in the meeting. So, if that was the final decision, or if there's an additional opportunity for them to comment at a village council meeting, for example.
So, if, if not all the information's available or there's more discussion, is it possible for the meeting to be continued to another meeting where there needs to be more opportunity for input or information answered? And how do the residents know that they can come back to that meeting?
Of course. So, if there's ever an opportunity where more information is needed, or there's questions that are raised that need to be answered, the plan commission or whatever board can continue the meeting. That is typically continued to a date certain, so typically, the next meeting on the agenda or the next meeting on the calendar. And then what we like to do is we tell people to check the website or to contact staff to see if there's any changes to the agenda, if the item's being pushed back even further.
Okay, so there's plenty of opportunity for everybody to know what's coming up next.
There are. I like to have people contact staff to stay informed if they need to or to check websites.
Okay, that's great, and I think that's an important message in general, is that staff is a resource to everybody involved in this process of a smooth meeting, the commission, the applicants, and also the residents.
Right, staff is definitely working for all three folks, for the commission members, for the applicant, and for the public. It's a public hearing, it's open to the public, we want to keep everybody informed, we want to make sure that people have an opportunity to speak.
So, as part of the meeting process that you mentioned, you said staff does a presentation on the case, and so, doesn't it sometimes seem like the staff is just up there making the pitch for the applicant, that they're just telling somebody else's story? Why does the staff make the presentation?
Well, staff has a professional obligation to make a professional opinion and an assessment of the case. So, staff is going to look at the standards that are required for approval of a certain petition and ensure that those standards are met for the community. So, staff is looking out for the community on a professional basis and to try to make sure a professional opinion in terms of standards and how the petition meets the standards, and also then how, any application that comes forward meets the Conference of Plan or other planning documents that are in play.
Let's talk a little bit about the testimony, the part of the meeting where either the experts stand up and talk or the residents stand up and talk, because that can sometimes be a contentious part of the meeting. Are there ever limits on how much testimony there can or should be, or, you know, how many applicant, or how many residents can speak? How does, how does the whole testimony thing work?
Well, there's never really any limit to the amount of testimony that can be provided. We want to provide an open meeting to anybody who wishes to speak. I think the important thing is, is if we see a large crowd in the audience, to potentially set a time limit for each person to limit repetitive items here. So, if it's a five-minute or a 10-minute limitation on people speaking, that provides them with a basis of how long they can speak for and get their points across. If there's not much of an audience, then there's not really a need for time limits, but if you see a large audience, that's a good, a good opportunity to have some time limits. Also, the chairperson, if he notes that any repetitive comments, if somebody, if there's a spokesperson that's going to speak for the neighborhood, that's important, too. So, the spokesperson can come up and say, I speak for these fellow 20 residents out here, and these are our concerns. Then the board knows that there's 20 residents out there, and they're not each coming to the, to the podium to speak, which takes time and can add time to the meeting. We like to encourage that no public discussion is held after the public hearing is closed. That's the, once the public hearing is closed, no discussion should occur from the public, no additional comments. Additionally, we don't like to set end times, but we do try not to set cases, start cases too late in the evening if you have evening meetings. It's important the public has jobs and they have things to do or kids to put to school in the morning, and so it's important that we maintain our timeframes and allow them an opportunity to speak when it's not too late in the evening as well.
And I think that's a great point. I think everybody's got a story about a marathon meeting that went till one or two o'clock in the morning, and sometimes those are necessary because a decision has to be made because of some sort of timing matter. But, but in general, you know, when people are tired and they've been around a while, the decision and the discussion is probably not as good as it could be otherwise.
Correct, I would agree. It's really important that people tend to get tired, they've been sitting at the dais listening to testimony for a few hours there as well. And then there's also members of the public that have spent their evening waiting to speak. So, in trying to keep the meeting moving along, a time limit sometimes is necessary. And I know sometimes there's a discussion about whether the speaker should be one pro and one con person as well, and I don't think that's necessary. A lot of times, you'll have a neighborhood group come out that's all against a proposal or all for a proposal, and I don't think it's fair to call out a pro versus a con and hear back and forth. Just let the opportunity for the public to come up, that's, goes back to meeting decorum, so everybody's clapping, then maybe that one person has a different opinion, is a little shy to come up, but we always encourage everybody to come up.
Well, it's interesting, you've mentioned it a couple of times, that some, there can be clapping at meetings, and there can be kind of some emotional responses that are, that are parts of the meeting. But what's, so, so that can play out in the testimony as well. Some folks that will testify at a hearing, they'll be called expert witnesses, right? They're the traffic engineer or somebody with a professional background or the land planner. And then there are residents testifying. What's the difference in the testimony of, say, an expert witness and then a resident who's got a concern that they want to bring forward?
So, an expert witness is someone who has the experience, knowledge, skill, and training in a specific area, so whether it's transportation, land use, or design, with the understanding of the evidence. And so, they are making their, their determination and their testimony based on facts and how it applies, and based on their experience and the application of those facts to the standards in the case. Now, an opinion from participants may be an anecdotal story or hearsay rather than actual facts, and so, some of those concerns may be very emotional, as you spoke to, that it affects them personally, and so sometimes those anecdotes become very personal, very emotional. The plan commissioners must take all of this into consideration, so it's a very unique challenge for them to take this all into consideration, but they really do need to look at the facts of the case and the standards of approval that are in the application.
So, what we're saying is just because the concerns of a community might be very emotional and very real, or there might be a lot of people in the room, that's not necessarily what makes the decision?
That's correct. Really, the, the number of people in the room should not make a decision, should not change the decision of the board. The board should be looking at the facts of the case and how they apply.
So, to, to take another step in terms of testimony, can anybody ask anybody a question at a meeting? So, if the transportation engineer is, is up doing their presentation, can one of the residents just kind of politely raise their hand and say, could you please explain to us how many cars are going to be there? Is that the way the meeting works, or is there a structure to it?
There should be a structure to it. So, you should have that resident, if that resident raises their hand, come to the podium or wherever the public is speaking and ask that question. I think it's easier, and it should be easier, if we, if those questions are taken down by the commission members, and then after the public has spoken, address those questions back to the applicant so that they can answer those questions. The back and forth between two members of the podium just does not help decorum. Sometimes that can become more argumentative or emotional in that sense, and then I think we lose some of the, some of the qualities of a public hearing.
So, the idea of maintaining decorum, and you mentioned this is part of the chair's role, I guess this is another point at which the chair is very important to this whole process. They're really kind of measuring this, and I know I've seen situations where the chair has really, again, politely and professionally had to say to people, thank you for your comment, we've heard that several times, is there anything new that you'd like to bring? And it's, that, that can be a real tough job for a chair, can't it?
It's a very hard job, especially when the audience is full and everybody believes that their opinion is a little bit different than what was heard before. But it's important to continue the meeting along so that everybody has an opportunity to speak. It's also important that the chair holds these meetings and manages these meetings so that we don't get into argumentative ideas here or booing or anything like that. We should allow people to have an opportunity to speak freely without feeling pressured.
I think that's, I think that's very important, and I've also seen situations where the rest of the commission can be helpful, too, to the chair, that, you know, they may also remind the public, or they may phrase their questions in a way that kind of takes some of the emotion out of the room and really makes the case about fact.
Yeah, committee members are very important, too, as well, to back up the chairperson. I've seen it as well, after some emotional testimony of taking a break, a five-minute break, just to let emotions cool down a little bit and come back.
So, let's, let's turn a little bit to the idea of how do we make the commissioners better armed, if you will, to be able to do this? So, if a commissioner gets their packet and they look through it before the meeting, and they have a question about a fact or an idea or something in there, what do they do? Can they call staff? Should they call staff?
They should definitely call staff. If there's a question on the agenda, they should call staff to discuss what's going on. A lot of times, some of the questions that the commission members ask are more technical in nature about a zoning ordinance regulation, and so that's something that staff can explain to them, that this is what this means, this is how this is applied. If it's a question that they have for staff that really gets to the case itself, then it's better that we will, we'll advise them to ask that question during the commission public hearing, because that's a good question for all the commission members to hear, and it's a good question to have answered in the public realm.
If, if the, if the commission asks a question, or if there's, there's parts of a case that might be, require a special, specialty, do other members of the community staff ever come to the meeting, the engineer or other folks that aren't necessarily the planners?
Yeah, there's always an opportunity for other staff members to come. So, if there's petitions that deal with transportation, your transportation engineer can come. If there's public works questions, any stormwater questions, an engineer could come. If there's other ideas out there that the planning staff doesn't have expertise on, it's important to draw those members that do so that they can answer any commission questions or public questions.
That's great, because we, we know that it's not just the planners, the community department that's part of the process, it's the entire, it's the entire community staff that, that helped build the, the expertise that's there.
Correct. The planners tend to know a lot, a little about a lot of stuff, and so it's important to have those background experts and other staff members that have that specific expertise to answer those questions, and sometimes to get into the technical answers behind a specific question.
Do you typically have your corporation counsel at your plan commission meetings?
We do not have our counsel at the plan commission meetings.
Okay. I know that some communities do, and I think it's just sort of a matter of personal, community preference.
It is a matter of community preference. Sometimes if we anticipate a very controversial item, we'll have counsel here, but for the majority of the items, there's no counsel.
You mentioned Robert's Rules, and that that's the way that the chair runs the meeting. I think a lot of people think of Robert's Rules as sort of an arcane, confusing way to, to take over a meeting. Do you ever find that Robert's Rules causes a problem, or do you find that that structure helps the meeting out?
I think the structure helps the meeting out. I think it's Robert's Rules light. I wouldn't say that all the Robert's Rules are followed, but I think generally, in the, in the process and how meetings are moved along, that's how Robert's Rules applies.
I think that's a very excellent way to describe it. And, and what about the, the role of the staff at the meeting in terms of helping out the, the commission as they're going through and kind of sorting out what to do? I mean, I know I've been at meetings where things maybe kind of go a little bit askew, or there's some confusion about how people should vote, or where should we go, and is it all right for the chair to kind of look down at the staff and say, Stan, help me out here, what do I do? And does that happen, and is that sort of out of decorum of the meeting, or is that okay?
I think it's very important for the chairperson to do that. It moves the meeting along and makes sure that we're getting the answers and the, and the recommendations that we need to move it to counsel. If there's any questions about voting, that's always important, too, whether it's a even number board that night, and whether you need a majority to vote for something or to approve something, and if it does end up in a tie, what does that mean moving forward as well? So, that's very important. It also helps if sometimes the topic and the, and the discussion can get off track, and so it's important for staff to draw that discussion back into what's being discussed and what needs to be approved that evening, or what needs a recommendation that evening.
Do you ever stop and read back the motion to the, to the commission just so that everybody's on the same page and people know what they're voting for?
Yes, that's important to do. Some, sometimes the motions are very straightforward, but other times they're a little confusing, especially if somebody adds a condition or wants to change the motion slightly, so it's important to read that back to the commission members. It's also important to explain, on some motion, it's confusing. If you vote yes, you're really voting no for something, or if you're voting no, you're voting yes for something. So, it's important for the members of the commission to understand what they're actually voting for.
I know that in a lot of places, the recommendation is always, you make a motion in the positive, so people know how they're, how they're voting.
Right.
Absolutely. So, we've talked about all this expertise that's, that's involved, and we've talked about the role of the commission. The commission is going to be making a recommendation to the city council or the village board. If it's just a recommendation, what's the big deal about the plan commission in the public hearing? What, you know, why, why do they do this?
Well, the plan commission is important, and any, any public hearing body is, because they actually conduct the public hearing. So, a council is a public meeting, but in this case, it's a public hearing where the people, the people of the public aren't afforded an opportunity to speak. The commission members are members of the public, members, residents of the community, neighbors of the public, and so they have a different perspective on things. This could affect them personally, whereas staff may not live in the community or may not be affected by this. Additionally, the
I think a lot of people think of Robert's Rules as sort of an arcane, confusing way to take over a meeting. Do you ever find that Robert's Rules causes a problem, or do you find that that structure helps the meeting out?
I think the structure helps the meeting out. I think it's Robert's Rules light. I wouldn't say that all the Robert's Rules are followed. But I think generally, in the process, and how meetings are moved along, that's how Robert's Rules applies.
I think that's a very excellent way to describe it. And what about the role of the staff at the meeting, in terms of helping out the commission as they're going through, and kind of sorting out what to do? I mean, I know I've been at meetings where things maybe kind of go a little bit askew, or there's some confusion about how people should vote, or where should we go. And is it all right for the chair to kind of look down at the staff and say, "Stan, help me out here. What do I do?" And does that happen, and is that sort of out of decorum of the meeting, or is that okay?
I think it's very important for the chairperson to do that. It moves the meeting along, and makes sure that we're getting the answers and the recommendations that we need to move it to counsel. If there's any questions about voting, that's always important, too, whether it's a even-numbered board that night, and whether you need a majority to vote for something, or to approve something. And if it does end up in a tie, what does that mean, moving forward as well? So that's very important. It also helps if sometimes the topic and the discussion can get off track. And so it's important for staff to draw that discussion back into what's being discussed, and what needs to be approved that evening, or what needs a recommendation that evening.
Do you ever stop and read back the motion to the commission, just so that everybody's on the same page, and people know what they're voting for?
Yes, that's important to do. Sometimes the motions are very straightforward, but other times they're a little confusing, especially if somebody adds a condition, or wants to change the motion slightly. So it's important to read that back to the commission members. It's also important to explain, on some motion, it's confusing. If you vote yes, you're really voting no for something, or if you're voting no, you're voting yes for something. So it's important for the members of the commission to understand what they're actually voting for.
I know that in a lot of places, the recommendation is always, you make a motion in the positive, so people know how they're voting.
Right.
Absolutely. So we've talked about all this expertise that's involved, and we've talked about the role of the commission. The commission is going to be making a recommendation to the city council, or the village board. If it's just a recommendation, what's the big deal about the plan commission in the public hearing? What, you know, why do they do this?
Well, the plan commission is important, and any public hearing body is, because they actually conduct the public hearing. So a council is a public meeting, but in this case, it's a public hearing where the people of the public are afforded an opportunity to speak. The commission members are members of the public, members, residents of the community, neighbors of the public. And so they have a different perspective on things. This could affect them personally, whereas staff may not live in the community, or may not be affected by this. Additionally, the plan commission meeting has more interaction between staff, the applicant, the commission members, and the public. There's more discussion that takes place at these meetings as well. And then concerns about proposals can be addressed at that time, too. The commission could choose to continue it, so the applicant could work on something, without having to move it before the council. The plan commission is also an opportunity, it may be less formal than a council meeting, and the public may be more comfortable, if this is their first time coming to village hall, or to city hall, to speak in front of people.
So there's a whole difference in the level of formality of the process. It's a little more inviting to the community. And I think what you said is also very important, is that the commission brings their expertise as residents of the community, which is also very valuable, as the process plays out.
Correct. And a lot of the commission members may be professional engineers, architects, or in the field. And so they also bring their expertise, and their background, and their knowledge of other projects that go on, or similar projects in other communities.
Another question about the technical aspects and the expertise. Again, same sort of thing. Planners are trained professionals, a lot of them have master's degrees. There's an engineer that's involved. There might be any number of experts and professionals. Again, how does the plan commission fit into that, if there's all these experts with all these degrees reviewing it?
Well, plan commission plays an important role, because they want to make a recommendation, and they're looking out for their community themselves. And they're trying to make sure that what's proposed, or what's applied for, meets the standards in the zoning ordinance. And it's a check, and it's a recommendation for us. They're interested in making their community a better place, and they want to provide a place for the public to speak, and offer their opinions. And so that's what the plan commission does.
So as a staff, how do you go about providing training, or some understanding to the commissioners of how the meeting is going to run? I mean, part of having a good meeting, an effective meeting, is having a well-trained commission. How do you, how do you help the commissioners understand how to do, how to do a good meeting?
Well, we always talk to our chairperson before the meeting, and tell them, explain what's on the agenda, and what's coming up, and what we anticipate as a staff, is any potential issues. We try to hold training with the plan commission members, once every couple of years at the minimum, to talk to them about new rules and regulations, new laws that have come out, and to see if they have any concerns about how the staff reports are written, how the meetings are held, and how information is provided to the public. So we try to provide them with information, and these training opportunities, like we're doing today.
So Stan, we've talked a bit about the complexities of the meeting, the importance of the chair in maintaining decorum, keeping the meeting going. What would you say are some of the top three or so qualities of a good plan commission chair, or a good commission chair in general?
The first one would be that I believe the chairperson has to be a little empathetic. A lot of people will be coming to the plan commission meeting for a first time to have, first time to a public meeting, and they might be a little scared, they might be a little emotional about something that might be affecting them. So to be able to be empathetic to that person, and let that person talk, but while still maintaining the rules. I think, secondly, the chairperson has to be somebody that runs a well-oiled meeting, in terms of making sure that things are followed, the rules are followed, that the process is followed, the due process is provided. I think it's also important that that person can draw comments out from the different commission members. It's important that everybody has an opportunity to speak, and that he offers that opportunity to everybody to make their comments. And then also to make sure that if there is a discrepancy, or a difference of opinion on the commission, that that difference of opinion doesn't boil over into an argument, that there's a professional decorum, there's a professional, there's a professional understanding between the two people, of how they act, and that both commission members act responsibly and professionally.
So there's a lot of different hats. There's kind of a referee some of the times, and you're sort of the helper some of the times. And what about the times where the audience might be getting out of control, or people are making comments that are maybe a little bit inappropriate? What does a chair have to do to reel that in?
Well, I think the chair needs to make those comments known, and to hit the gavel, and to let people know that we're going to operate in a professional manner here, and that the cheering or the booing really could impact who wants to talk that time. And this is an opportunity for everybody to speak. We may not agree with everybody's opinion, but again, it's important that everybody has that opportunity. This person that disagrees with you has the same opportunity as you. And so whether that's asking people to quiet down, to remind them not to clap so loudly, and to remind them not to clap at all, or then if it does get out of hand to hold the meeting, or to pause the meeting and let everybody calm down emotionally.
Great. I think that's very true. So the rest of the commission, and the part that they play, obviously, we described it before, we talked about their role, and they help the chair, and they're responsible for all these points of decorum, making motions, whatnot, if the meeting's going to run well. What kind of background do commissioners have? I mean, they're obviously residents of the community, but do they have to have a background in planning, or real estate, or anything like that?
No, there's no real requirement to have any backgrounds. It's anybody in the public that's interested. Some people come into planning late, and decide a project maybe impacted them, and they'd like to learn more, and they become involved in the plan commission. Sometimes it can just be a schoolteacher who likes to be involved in the community. Really, anybody with any background who is interested in serving is a good opportunity for a plan commission member. The APA has opportunities. We share with the commission members planning magazines, planning articles. It's important that if somebody's brand-new to this planning world, that they're provided a background in terms of what other communities are doing, or what the practices are. We provide training opportunities to those commission members if they're brand-new. And also, there's a good balance between somebody with a technical background, and somebody with a resident background, who may have a different profession.
So people don't have to be expert on parking ratios for mixed-use developments in order to become a plan commissioner?
Not at all. That's why there's a staff.
That's great. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
So as you can see, the video provided a pretty good snapshot of what staff is often put in, as far as kind of a position, a perspective, also kind of the duties of the commission, and the commissioners, and what you're evaluating. And so I just wanted to take a moment and thank each of you for being a part of the planning commission. We appreciate all the different perspectives that are kind of brought to the table. And staff really makes an effort to be transparent, and answer questions, and kind of doing the digging, and research, and history, and allowing that, giving you the tools to make the decisions. So we're available. If you have any questions, or you see things in staff reports, feel free to reach out to us. We definitely want to assist where we can. So hopefully, the video was insightful, but it gives the public a snapshot of what we do here, so.
Thank you very much. That was a very good video. We're going to move on from item number five, skipping item number six, because we've already taken it, to item number seven, which is the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Mr. Chair, we had a meeting, there was a meeting last week, with one item on the agenda, which was the Peavine Employment Center. The motion for acceptance of that actually had a majority of the vote, but not a supermajority, so it actually failed. So then, the second motion for regional performance wasn't taken at the, since it was the City of Reno as the applicant, it was given an opportunity back to City of Reno to determine if they wanted to save it for the appeals process, which they did. So I believe, actually, that item is on the council's agenda for next week, to determine the next steps for that. And we expect to see that back at regional. Whether it's the next meeting or not, we don't know. So that was that meeting. A little bit of, you know, additional discussion from council at that one, so I guess we had an answer for that. So, and then the next meeting, I guess, is the, will be at the end of June.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number eight, which is staff announcements.
Jason Garcia-Laboo, planning manager, for the record. As Commissioner Johnson just mentioned, June 8th, the city council will be taking up that issue that we just discussed about Peavine. And in addition to that, and I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, there will be two items, as far as kind of text amendment initiations. It's the beginning of the process for Title 18. So the first component is to get the odds and ends, typos, and grammatical inconsistencies, things like that. But the second item is more focused on council items that were initiatives, such as affordable housing, or other items like that. So we're very pleased, again, I can't tell you how happy we are, to be bringing those items forward. We had kind of changing pace. We had two employees start this week. Very thrilled. I think I mentioned it the last couple of meetings, Melanie and Joseph. They've joined our planning division, so we have some additional staff to help process some of the items that we need assistance with, on applications and other things. As far as kind of our next meeting, June 15th, we will have a presentation from Suzanne Groneman. This was, talked about about a month ago, and she'll give us an update, as requested by Commissioner Gower, on sustainability. And then lastly, just to recap, on the May 25th city council meeting, a lot of the April 20th items, as you can recall, that was quite the agenda. And actually, a good example, showing the process of a full agenda, after we just watched the video. Some of those items went forward and were approved by the council, and that includes the Reno City Center Skyway, the Meridian Project, and the Galena Annexation, as kind of previously discussed, so, and reviewed by the commission. That's everything for staff updates. And then, again, let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you. I'll move on to agenda item number nine, just commissioner suggestions for future agenda items.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Draculich, just a quick question, probably for you, Jason. When do we think we'll see the tree ordinance item again?
That currently is still going through updates, so it's still in draft form. So I don't have a timeline, but I can ask our tree ordinance team if we can call them that. There's a number of staff working on it. I'll come back with the update for the...
No worries. I was just curious.
Yeah, good.
It's still in draft form, though.
Okay.
Okay. Seeing none, nothing else. We'll move to agenda item number 10, just public comments. Do we have any requests to speak for?
We did not receive any requests to speak for, no correspondence, and no voicemails.
Is there anyone in the public? Or the public that would like to speak?
No.
Okay. Seeing none. We'll close public comments. Any motion for adjournment?
So move to second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Fourth. Good night.
Hi.
Hi, everyone.
Thanks.